November 10, 2025, Goshen Board of Education meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Mr. Shinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Here.
This is working.
Here.
This is Pop rocky.
Yes.
For rare here, great.
Here. We have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Bill made the motion, Corey second. Any discussion? Mr. Shinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is working.
Yes.
That rocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
This is great.
Yes. I'd like to invite everyone to join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand and join our Mark Hook principal. Lee Stevens, delete us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Principal Stevens.
Okay, I hope you can all hear me. I'm very, very excited for having this opportunity this evening. And I'm so excited to see all of my friends and all of my families here. And this is something that's very near and dear to my heart. So we wanted to take a moment to highlight some of our other friends in the building that don't really get a lot of recognition. And since we're talking about achievement, we're going to be talking about student achievement. And I'd like to introduce my friends out there. So when you hear your name, if you could just give us all the wave. Ben Omees. Emily Hatfield.
Good girl.
A.J. Lindenberg.
Yes.
Nathan Brown. And Kara Otkey. And then I also have some very special staff here with me this evening that we would not be able to do any of this without their help. So our music teacher Carolyn Petty and our special ed teacher over here, Alyssa Heekan. And one of our paraprofessionals in one of the units, Ashley. Thank you all for being here this evening. So our highlight this evening is about something called adaptive specials. And this is blocks of time that we have built into the schedule this year, specific for this year into the school day to cater to the diverse learning needs of all of our special education students and all of our students in general. Because as we know, not everybody learns the same, right? And a smaller group setting for some of our students to acclimate them and to get them to understand social cues and understand what a classroom looks like is very important so that we can get them moving towards a better classroom setting. So we, we knew that the need was very big and great because we have four unit classrooms, which I said Alyssa Heekan is one of those teachers. And we have anywhere from five to eight students in that classroom with aid support. And we have a total of 28 students that are in four of our units with the teacher and a couple of different aid supports there. And it just wasn't real feasible every once in a while to get kids into a regular, I guess, general education setting for music or for PE or for library and STEAM classes. And so we knew that these kiddos needed some fine arts and we wanted to build in time into the schedule. So we did. And we built in 40-minute specials blocks for STEAM, music, PE and library. And these occur with all of our students two or three times a week, which is great. And what really it is, is a lot of communication between the teacher and the music teacher or the PE teacher to say, can so-and-so come today? Are they ready to come today? So a class of eight kids, there might be five of those students that actually go to their 40-minute block of time and have their music class in that very small group and that very small setting of five kids, which really developmentally for them, if they are not able to communicate, which we have some that aren't or show signs of autism or are somewhere on the spectrum, this gives them the opportunity to learn with their peers, learn social skills with the school and with the teachers, and then be immersed into the regular ed setting, which is awesome. This really? And so some highlights real quickly. I want to talk fast because I know they're very excited. So really, the adaptive specials does all of these things. It includes all kiddos. It gives them equal opportunities, gives them skill building, confidence and comfort and routine and balance. So things like inclusion. Every child's included. They get a chance to take part in all areas of their learning. They're in specials and adaptive sessions make that possible. We love the fact that it gives them all equal opportunity. Students receive the same rich learning experiences as all of their peers do in ways that match what their abilities are and their comfort level. Not all kids are comfortable singing. Not all kids are comfortable running around in the gym class. So it just kind of adapts to whatever those kids are ready and developmentally ready and ready for the needs for them. It does a lot of skill building. So adaptive specials help strengthen the important life skills. And things that we're working on are communication, teamwork, coordination and creativity. All of those things that we want every kid at Mark Hook to learn how to do, right? Confidence and comfort. As you, you'll be able to tell, you can see some of them out there already that are kind of confident and ready to come out and do this. It provides a very structured environment for them that helps them feel safe and confident and proud of their progress. Here's the big one is routine. Routine and balance. So regularly scheduled times help students really transition smoothly to build all this consistency so that they're able to do these things. And that's what our goal is. Okay, we have some pictures here.
Kind of do it smaller scale.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Well, so not every specials teacher's here tonight. Mrs. Petty, I asked her to come over and do the singing because I witnessed it and thought it was fantastic. And I was like, wow, they're going to sing a Halloween song for you here in a little bit. But like I said, they have attended library classes with Mrs. Dwyer. So there's some of these pictures of them doing some storytime and some of those things there. Those were the music classes. And then I think on the next slide was Jim with Mr. Tissot out there climbing the apparatus and swinging, enjoying all those things in a smaller group setting. We can go to the next one, Mr. Williams, since I didn't leave out. This will be my last field and then I get to turn it over to you guys. You're doing a great job listening. So we like to tie this all into our portrait of a graduate. So lots of things here are our status. Emily's ready. So academically, here, this is really differentiated instruction at its finest. Differentiated instruction for students so that they're able to have hands-on exploration and develop this joy, which you can see in their faces right now. Resiliency. Adaptive specials provide a lot of diverse opportunities for kids because they get all these skills across different settings and hopefully inspire them for lifelong learning. That's what our goal is. Effective communication. The students will strengthen their communication comprehension skills by attending. This is a big one. Attending to directions, following the directions, listening to directions, and then routines and learning how to respond appropriately. That's really what we want by the time that they leave out of our building, right? Socially responsible. They develop self-assurance by participating actively and doing all of these wonderful things in social risks in a very supportive environment because our teachers were fantastic. And so are our paraprofessionals. And then fearless learners. The adaptive special instruction allows each kiddo to express their ideas personally, which you'll see up here firsthand in just a moment, in meaningful ways. And so the idea here really is that this smaller setting allows our students with special needs to learn the skills that will help them to acclimate to a larger class, right? That's what we want. We want to be able to immerse them into the classroom in the class setting into their assigned homerooms, which some of them are doing very well now because they've had these blocks of time where they're learning how to be a student, right? How to be social, how to effectively communicate. Okay? Okay, so without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Petty. Mr. Williams, if you'll hit that next slide. This is great.
Stand on a dot. AJ, stand on a dot. And Tara, can you stand on that dot? Over here. Ben, it'll be your turn, ready? Can we show what we do with our slide whistle? Ready? Ready, AJ? So we start class with the slide whistle. Help get our voices ready for music and help get us focused. And then we decided we were going to share with you one of our favorites from October. Emily and Ben, back over here, buddy.
Baking right here.
Okay? We decided since November just started that we're gonna show one of our favorites from October. And we were doing some songs in minor keys and we were practically moving with the beat. Hey, Ben. Did you see Ben's face on there? Can you help me pick something to put in our brew?
Face!
Yeah. Ben, what do you want to put in our brew? We're going to stir the brew. What do you want to put in the brew?
Throw eggs.
An egg? Let's put some eggs in the brew. Everyone grab some eggs. Let's grab some eggs. Ready? Toss them in the brew. And let's do it. Help me sing it. Stirring and stirring and stirring up. Stirring and stirring and stirring up. All right, next one. Let's see who's next. Who's next? We can see it back there too. Emily, what do you want to put in the brew? You want my chickens in the brew? Ben, can you help me? Ben, let's all pick us some chickens. Stir the brew, ready? Stirring and stirring and stirring the brew. Stirring and stirring and stirring the brew. Next one? Who's next? AJ, what are we putting in the brew? So we're working on communicating and making a choice. Let's put pumpkin and pick up a big heavy pumpkin. Oh, I see Emily's got one. Stirring and stirring and stirring up. Stirring and stirring and stirring up. All right, let's see who's next. Kara's turn. Kara, what are we putting in the brew? Kara, what are we putting in the brew? Ice cream. Let's scoop some ice cream. Scoop some ice cream. Emily, can you tell them? Let's stir up that brew. Stirring and stirring and stirring the brew. Stirring and stirring and stirring up. One more. It's in, what are we putting? We're putting more pumpkin in the brew. Stir up more pumpkin. We're gonna sing it faster with pace when you want to take faster, ready? Stirring and stirring and stirring the brew. Stirring and stirring and stirring the brew. You can see it.
All right, so I'm going to ask our friends to come back up one at a time. All right? And when you come up, I've got a certificate for you for being a fearless learner. It's not easy to come in front of a big audience with a bunch of adults and do that. So I'm going to call you up and I'm going to ask you if you can tell me who you brought with you tonight too. So you can point at them, you can wave at them. Mom, dad, grandma, grandpa's families. Thank you for being here with these little guys. All right, I'm going to sit down so that the six foot four guy doesn't look scary. Let's have Ben come up. Ben, you're going to come up and give me a knuckle sandwich.
Who's next is Cici. And Anna.
And Anna.
And daddy.
And daddy.
And Papa.
And Papa.
And Gigi.
And Gigi.
And Papi.
And Papi.
We have Emily. Good job.
Good job.
AJ? Would you bring one with you tonight?
Say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, buddy. Good job. Would you bring one with you?
Who's this? Who's this? Who's it?
Chuck.
And Kara. Ice cream.
Ice cream.
Yes. Would you bring one with you?
Would you bring it here?
Who's bringing one with you?
And Jerry up. I'll use it to stay back.
I know, I can say this here.
And then we also have certificates for our awesome staff. I will say, there are pins in the corner of those. Those are our Goshen pin. It's gonna staff our students that go above and beyond. So you can put that someplace, keepsake for them. I don't know, it's kinda like my good citizenship award that I want.
So I just wanna thank you guys all for coming tonight. You're more than welcome to stay. You bring a lovely energy to our meeting that we don't usually have. So, definitely feel free to stay, but if you would not like to stay, this is kind of a great time to sneak out. Or we, can you?
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. That's awesome.
I know, I was hoping you'd get it.
Guys, have a good night.
Great job kiddos.
Guys, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, that was great.
Okay, you guys gonna, you gonna sign your report?
Come up to the, I mean the circle. Come up to the front. You don't wanna hear me.
No. Alright, we'll try to be a little energetic tonight.
Come on, Lynda, you first.
Alright, moving on to, oh, business, agenda item seven A, facilities update. Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Charlie's here, so he'll chime in as I go through this. Just giving you guys an update on where we're at. Obviously, both projects, we've been working through design and development, which you guys have seen a couple of times. I'm just reminding you, really the structure of the inside of the buildings have not changed a ton. Remember, we were on to interior finishes and that kinda stuff. But, we did just recently approve a final current design after walking it last week with SHP. So that's that blue, the blue one. So you've got the original existing plan and you can see, pretty much gutted it. And what we're doing on the inside is gonna be pretty dramatic from, you know, from the Mark Cook side. Todd's side is obviously getting the most with classrooms we can put in. And then, my office tree says down that side getting renovated there as well. So, a lot of work in this process. Where we're at is budget side and what we're heading out to bid with. As we talked to you guys originally, very high level. It's about a $2 million investment, including the building up at Patricia. Right now, we're pretty close. We're gonna be heading out for a, you guys will approve tonight, or it's on the agenda to approve the bid package for the Patricia Boulevard. You know, it's at about $1,056,000 advertised. It's about $131 a square foot when you talk about building new. And we know that that was the route to go. Currently, we still have a few steps left with Mark Cook, but it's right around $490 as it's advertised bid with some steps left in there to look at for more. Obviously, the scope changed a little bit from, you know, just property knows to understanding where electric, HVAC, plumbing, those need for the, are not seen when you're walking it. But we're very close and with the hungry market as we go out to bid. We hope, you know, that that'll help us as well. So the next steps, and I'm just kinda gonna go through both of these, and then you guys can ask questions as you may have them. Tonight is board approval to bid. By Friday, there will be CD documents and, like, those are construction documents will be available. We will advertise that on our website in the Clermont Sun over the next two weeks, where folks can go get the bid packages and the construction documents. On November 20th, at 3:00 PM, there will be a pre-bid meeting, onsite meeting, where potential bidders can walk the site to see what it entails. So that will happen down there, that'll be advertised as well. And then, December 5th is a public bid opening at the board office, one bid to do. And then, December 8th, you will have approval of that construction bid as we go through that process. Next step, just kinda tentative with Mark Cook. I've got them in red because obviously some things can change as we go through this. But, same process, just different month. The BOE, the eighth meeting will have a bid approval and then CD documents and publicizing it on the website, newspapers. We have not determined the pre-bid meeting date. We will have that by the time we publicize this. And then, January 9th, we will public bid opening. And that will be at the board office as well, at the current board office. And then, January 12th, BOE approval of construction bid for Mark Cook. So, that said, questions you guys? I do have a question, a lot of questions you guys have on that. It's moving along, I think we're, I had that blue and red document to start to kinda scoped out this whole thing and we are on target. I do appreciate Charlie and his team for keeping us on pace. There was decisions that had to be made and they were always readily available to answer questions we might have as we went through this. And have been a tremendous help getting these two projects ready to go. Brian, if I'm talking, any questions you guys have?
What's, what's the biggest challenge that Patricia addressed?
Probably, you know, this, we have to get that done by, I think we're targeting.
End of March.
Yeah, April 1st is what I was gonna say. It's always fun to have it on April Fool's Day. So getting that done, so, so we can then move the admin office and then giving May 1, the next contractor, May 1 to August 1 to get Mark Cook done. So, they're pretty compressed in reality, but actually.
Timeline.
So the timeline, like, if, so if we, we're gonna, we're gonna be done by this Friday, we're gonna be out for a week, two weeks plus a little extra time. Thanksgiving week's kind of a funny week. So, I think we're gonna get good interest. The market is hungry, there's not much out there. And so, we're seeing, you know, really good coverage on bids, which means it brings the price down. So, if, if we can open up bids on December 5th and they're within the allowable threshold and within the budget, we're gonna give good signs to that contractor, it's gonna come to you guys on December 8th. If you guys approve the entering into an agreement, that contractor's gonna be ready to go. And so, there's really kind of a couple bonus weeks ahead of it. So, somebody actually emailed me today, if, if we get a green light December 8th, when can we start? And I was like, let's just tentatively play December 15th. So there's kinda like two weeks of extra time that's built in there. And that's when demo would happen, procurement would start happening on some of the stuff that might have lead times, but then everything else is readily accessible. So, it's a great time to bid because companies are usually, construction companies are on the calendar or they're looking to fill their books for '26.
How does word get out?
So there's two ways to. Yeah, hire right. Clermont Sun's not gonna give money out there. That's just a chicken in a box, honestly. There's two, you have to do two things. One, you have to advertise a one newspaper, it doesn't matter the newspaper. We say Clermont Sun just because it's faster, it's your local. And then, you have to post on your website. So those are your two methods. There's listing agencies that are out there that charge. And so, I, one of them emailed me today, are there strong agencies that are ready? Can we advertise, you know, on the 14th? Yeah. And they were the ones, I said, when can we hypothetically start? I said, maybe by the 15th of December. So, they start spreading it and one picks it up, the other picks it up, another picks it up. And then, in reality, there's a website of a printing company in Cincinnati that aggregates. It's one of those things where it's, you can literally tell two, you can publish it twice and then it'll be in 20 things.
Have another question, challenge question. At the Patricia location, HVAC, electricity, I mean how?
Yeah, so the, yeah, good question. Yeah, the electric is residential that's there. And so, it's 120, single phase, and we're designing a new system to have 120 single phase. We, Troy looked at doing it, upgrading it to a three-phase, it's just not necessary. So, so really, the electric capacity that's there is sufficient for the use that we're gonna, you guys are gonna provide. Plug loads are a lot less than when that building was designed in 1988 or whatever it was. And then HVAC, we're gonna utilize the existing system. It has new units that supply all the air, heating and cooling. It's all around the border of the property, or the building. And then, we're gonna provide some supplemental cooling in the middle for some spaces that just don't have those vents. So, so.
Circulation, the offices, I mean, that'll be good.
Yeah, yeah, it's all, it's all, it's in ground. It's, so it's a slab on grade, but there's ductwork cast over the concrete. The air gets distributed today. So, as far as challenges, the other really big challenge is actually Clermont County getting a permit. That's always my biggest worry here in this county. It takes a long.
And then.
We've already applied for it in heaven or back.
I have one as well, is I know one of the things that we were considering when we, it was proposed that we wanted to plan for a little bit of growth. The new facility plans for a little bit of growth in terms of office space and.
Yeah. Do you guys know the exact head count offhand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. There's 20 offices with desks. And then, there's a potential additional one of 21. So, and then the other thing is, the current plan, you're getting really, one, two, three, four, almost five meeting areas. Right now, you really have one. So, there's a lot more ability to meet. And that's, that's the biggest thing we find in any office we design, is people need more flexibility.
Parking spaces, are we good? Did we look at that?
Yeah, we've, we've double checked, we've checked it, but there wasn't an initial, you know, like, an event like this, there might be some folks on the street. Yes, for 40 minutes or a half hour. But for the day-to-day use, there's sufficient parking, so.
Is there room to expand it just in case we had?
Yeah, there probably, there is.
There is. I think it would be down the side or out to the front street. You might wanna keep that in mind if we do have meetings and whatnot. We definitely want people parking on the street. No, I don't wanna do that. It's not like a busy, busy road.
Yeah, but it could. I think that'd be a future consideration if we did everything up there. It's good for the day-to-day.
Yeah.
And then, this building will be like, you advertise it more to like a, just a normal office building type construction company where the park.
Well, it's really, so, yeah, this is, this is seen, this is, you know, this building is wood-framed, wood trusses, drywall. We're gonna go in with steel studs for electric and data, you know, things that we're gonna pull in the walls. So that's easier. But, it will attract, it'll attract a smaller-scale builder who likes working for public entities. So, Mark Cook on the flip side will attract about that same, that same builder. There's folks who like to work for public entities. Believe it or not, public entities pay, their money's there and they pay faster. So, they lean towards working for public entities on a hard bid, private. Sometimes, private money might be a little different flow, so.
So, in theory, it could be the same contractor.
It could, yeah, it could. And we, you know, we talked about packaging it, but it, since it's two sites, it's gonna be two separate permits. It just makes more sense for you guys for cost-wise, you'll get a better bang for your buck just going out bidding twice and trying to get two to put it, rather than the bottom leg it all up, so.
And then, do you need, do you and Todd and kinda handle the opening of the business effort? Do you need anyone, do you need a facilities committee that?
Yeah, it's generally, it's generally at a minimum. It's usually someone from my company scrapping it and the treasurer at a minimum. Interesting parties always kinda show up, just wanna see. But, you know, the actual bid opening is a five-minute exercise. We can take a picture of it, text it as soon as we know the.
I don't think I would have anything to add to it, but I just, it was official business of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, they're right out loud, but it's, yeah, it's, it's not as exciting as you make it, is.
It's not super exciting. I think the thing that tickles me is, I remember when we was doing on the field turf, they all set out in their cars and met like the same time. And I still would just say that.
Well, they, what they do is they fill it out, they get the, all the certifications and, and everything's done, filled out, and a lot of them, they're adding it up, the final bids that are coming into their office. Like, some of them still use fax, these things called fax machines. And, and then they call the person on site and say, alright, like, we have $1,056,000. Let's say someone figures it out, it's $9,056,000. Alright, we added it up, put it in 956. So they'll sit there and write it in and write, and then close it and lick up the envelope and then walk in and hand it over. That's usually what it is. That's, that's a small shop who bids a lot. Some of these guys, their hit rates, they get one out of 10, so. They, they're pretty regimented. But we're excited and the challenge of the pale will be the pre-bid. When I, when we have the pre-bid, we have three, four, or five companies. So that's a good sign that there's good interest. But it's a clean job, it's, you know, like I said, it's really, it's the schedule and it's the time of year. It's a good time to bid, it really is.
So that's really smart of them to show up to the walk.
Oh, the walk, they need to, because hopefully, hopefully that'll inform, like, they, they look at, you know, they look at where they're gonna park their trucks, where the dumps are gonna go, what's the in and out? What are the neighbors like, you know? So, yeah.
He might bring cookies or something, right? Where the coffee shop is.
So, it's, you know, construction, design, it's like a team sport. And we're just trying to build that team and get the right players involved. And then, and then we have the team on bid day and it's go time. So, we take a pretty active role during construction. We're watching on behalf of the district, making sure that the things are put again, is meeting our specs at the quality and standard that we, that we expect. And then, we answer questions during it, we ultimately produce a punchline for the district and get it to the finish line, so. So, it's gonna be an interesting year because on April Fools, you might have a new office and you guys have to figure out the actual move, moving in and then cleaning up the old Mark Cook area and then we'll do the same, song and dance there, so.
I'm anxious for this side of it to be done because we are.
Yeah. One-month grace between.
We have a one-month grace. Yeah, we have a one-month, yeah, one-month period in the event that like, like, sometimes it's, oh geez, can't even get, can't even get that equipment for 14 weeks, you know? So. Gives us flexibility. And then, we also are targeting Mark Cook to be done by August 1st. Knowing that, I also have to deal with that.
I'll tell you, I got really, was it last month when you showed us the?
Interers.
Yeah, I got excited because once you see it, like, you know, with the colors of the, of the space. I mean, it was really like. I mean, an overhead shot is like, right, there's a classroom, right? But then you see, it's really, and it, you know, it just seems like some of the, sometimes classrooms can kinda seem like, kind of like a, I don't know. Yeah, but then you see that with, with everything, you know, the carpets and the colors and the furniture and it's, it gets, it gets exciting.
Yeah, no, I mean, I applaud you guys for, for doing what you're doing. You're doing it real fiscally. Yeah, no, I mean, I applaud you guys for, for doing what you're doing. You're doing it in a real fiscally minded way. And kids are going to benefit by any more education space. And for you guys professionally, you're going to have more opportunities for professional development, more collaboration with administrative team. So it's, it should be a win-win.
Yeah.
At the end of the day.
I'd say, I, with, with you guys too, um, last, you know, few weeks before the elections and everything, spoke to a lot of coworkers or other people talking, guys that know that are on school board and ask, oh, what's Goshaan doing? How you doing this? And people, you know, trying to pass levies and bonds in other districts and, uh, what they do with growth and how they handle that. And I, I brag about this project right here, how going this for half of what it costs to add space on just because you kept your eyes out on that spot and Patricia's all become available, jumped on it. Um, and, and then to remodel that there and this across the street and for going, it is the best bang for the buck. Just be responsible.
Good decision.
That's, you know, and, and sometimes, uh, some districts just, uh, I don't know, seem to throw money at things without really saying a giveaway. This is the best use per dollar. Yeah, I appreciate all, all of your guys' hard work to do.
Thank you.
April Fools is going to be a good big day because then that.
We'll make sure.
Firehouse.
Firehouse, yeah.
Yeah.
The firehouse completion date.
Things expected around.
Only now on our revenue.
Yeah.
Got it?
I was just thinking that they're not really moving except their fire trucks. I was like, they're moving this way and like we could move our stuff on the fire truck.
Sure, the cost of the vans.
Yeah.
Any more questions?
Charlie, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, you weren't as lively as the last group, but you're once in the late two. Hope you enjoy.
Steve, most of you guys in Columbus.
All right, moving on, um, to go off new business. We will now move into the scheduled public hearing regarding the twenty twenty six, twenty seven, and twenty seven, twenty eight academic calendars proposed by our district calendar committee. This hearing has been properly noticed in accordance with state law and district policy. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments and input from members of the community.
So I work with our calendar committee and Donna Tedrick to create our academic calendars. We take three, um, different calendars to our committee. And the committee is comprised of teachers from every building, guidance counselors, athletic directors, um, administrators. We try to, I think there's about twenty five of us. This is on the calendar committee. I got that job because I gave Brian my opinion when he was the assistant superintendent. So, uh, I've been encouraging all my friends to give me their opinions too, because then they end up on the calendar committee. But we looked at last year, like which days were our lowest attended days by students? What were, um, we asked teachers to say what's their preference. So overwhelmingly, two weeks of Christmas is the number one. For three of the four buildings, the high school wants to be out by Memorial Day. People want a fall break. So we try to keep all of that in mind as we create these calendars. And I think what we've created is probably their most favorite calendars I've ever seen. But it's because Memorial Day is late. So we were able to get some extra time off at Thanksgiving and such. And I want to, I want to retire from the calendar committee after these two calendars. I don't know if I'm going to be able to do it in the future, but, um, we're starting August tenth on the first calendar, but they get a fall break, they get the week at Thanksgiving, they get two weeks at Christmas, and they get an extra day, um, with spring break.
This stays with the same number of instructional days we've always had.
February.
Five student days and stick to it. So, yeah.
Yeah, February break. There's a four day weekend for February two. So it's, um, what we basically do though is we put the holidays that we know that we have to have off and then we kind of work backwards from there. But it is the same number of student days, the same number of teacher days as we always have had. Um, it's just that because we're starting August tenth and they get out a late Memorial Day, we're able to squeeze all this in. I don't know if we'll be able to do that in the future or it's going to take a long time to get back to this one, but, um, that's for, and we, we tried to do two years because people like to try to plan. And I honestly too, with graduations, getting our, um, scheduled time is important as well. So if we got two years at a time, we can kind of fill it out for the future. So. Do you guys have any questions about this calendar? We had to, Don and I looked at this probably, I don't know, a hundred times each. And then we sent out to the teachers and they looked at it and then we found another mistake, but it's fixed on these. So, um, it's like one of those things when you write an essay and you make a grammar mistake, but in your mind, you read it the right way. So this is what we're proposing for our, um, calendar for the next two school years.
So again, we'll, this will come back for court vote in December. Yeah. So it's really just information. I'd like. Like, yeah, it'll be tomorrow that, you know, the public hearing is held, the calendar will be out there.
Yeah.
Draft statement. It is, you know, it's, I've told Teresa and that committee, I mean, it's not an easy job to get that many people wanting different things. But I think that committee looks at instructional time with kids. You've got to look at state testing windows. We do have holidays that, you know, are contractual for court staff as well as, uh, teaching staff. So it's not easy. Uh, and those, with Labor Day being where it falls, um, for starting Memorial Day being where it falls, made it a little easier to do a few of the things that they've always wanted. I'm not going to say it's going to be that easy two years from now because of the calendar updates. You know, and I think two years, like Teresa said, does give good planning. So you guys have any thoughts, questions?
I'm not really on this calendar and I, I probably know the answer, but is there any way to get graduation not on a weeknight or a week, because we're a smaller school, do the bigger schools take the weekend?
If we stay at NKU, generally they are weeknights. Centos centers are only on the weekends. So you're starting into a lot of competition with sites.
And cost.
And cost, yeah.
Yeah. And I think NKU.
Does a very nice job, but yeah, generally those, so this will allow us to talk to them and get out in front of it. At least two years on the edge, good. So.
So, yeah, I take the location.
Yeah.
Over a date. Day of the week. So, yeah.
I like those long weekends in October, February. It's a nice break, kind of spreads. I mean, that's, that's kind of nice to stay there.
Pressure charged for that. For the staff and students.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I'm just kind of jealous. Where were you four years ago or five years ago? I'm just kidding. Oh, boy.
Guilty as charged.
Memorial Day. That ending date makes all the difference in the world.
Can't have your cake and eat it too. Conversation many, many times.
Obviously.
On this one, you can.
I wonder if resigns from the calendar committee after this second year though.
The hingest of the whole.
I'd say where, whenever you want to post something that you really want people to read, post it wherever you post this, because I think people really care about this, don't they?
I actually searched this more than anything as a parent.
That should be our. Like in order to get the link to the calendars, this first, and then you get the link. So.
Any, any questions?
We'll bring those back in.
We'll vote in December officially. All right. Good job, calendar committee. Moving on, um, new business B, public participation, Mrs. Scherzinger, do we have anybody signed up for public participation?
There is not anyone signed up tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to new business C, treasurer's court, Mr. Schenkel.
It's all you.
Okay. Well, there has been, uh, like fun going on up, up north legislatively, legislatively. And, um, there's been changes, uh, House Bill one eighty six, this is probably the biggest kick, um, to us, as you can see. So basically what, what has happened is, is they're trying to get rid of property tax. Bottom line, and, uh, in doing so, when they take that away, they're showing the impact of different districts. For us, we're at the twenty mil floor. So everything that they're, they're really looking at is hitting us. So we're here negative one point one million, what they're looking at taking away from us. And that's in this fiscal year and then, or not this, this year and then next. And what they plan on doing is having, um, the state kick in the difference of money for us so that we don't have a loss. But they are going to read, I mean, as if right now, they, they show us getting the loss of our real estate taxes. And that amount. So there's been a ton of stuff going on. The big thing is, is, uh, House Bill one eighty six resulted in estimated payment of three hundred and fifty eight million dollars in twenty seven and in twenty, twenty eight. And they're going to pay it out in August of twenty six for a hundred and four million and then, uh, the remaining balance in twenty seven. What they plan on doing to fund that is, you know, you have your, uh, Ohio tax free day. Is they're going to not have that anymore. So the money that they collect in taxes, that's what they're going to use to offset it, which to me.
Money that can sales taxes.
Yes, yes. So there's a lot going on there because when they take all this money away, it's, it's either going to have to come from income tax, sales tax. I mean, they got to, they got to do something to replace the money that's going away. So you can see we really got hit on that quite a bit.
I do. I mean, going back to this, we talked about this for two months straight. We talked about it for a while. I mean, this House Bill one eighty six, after meeting with legislature, was favorable to districts. And I think we agree with it regardless of the loss. There needs to be something. We've said that. Property tax reform, I'm not sure in the end what that is. This is sitting in the Senate. The Senate has been tweaking this. I'm not sure what it'll come out looking like. Um, but I think they did understand to give you a two-year biennial budget and then, um, you know, that you've planned for and built a five year forecast on. But there, you know, there's still a lot of unknowns. This isn't done. So, you know, I just think this piece of it, um, as Todd said, if you're going to stop the expanded sales tax, the tax has to come from somewhere. So we've said this, police, fire, libraries, parks, senior services and schools are all property tax. So it's got to come from somewhere. Um, but that's, you know, we'll see what, what comes of it. We'll continue our work with legislators and, you know, where the impacts are for us. And I think we've all said something needs to be done, but we're not there. It needs to be a collective and measured approach, uh, for all those entities, not just schools. So, okay. Still more out there.
Yeah. So we need more breath on that because there's different ones going on. The House actually passed these. And so now they're sending over the state senate to be, to be looking at all this stuff that they're, they're looking at. I, I can tell you one, one little soapbox here. It's normally they have, they, they all go through the budget process. The governor goes through vetoes or whatever he does it in, and it's done. And that's what your budget is. I mean, this, everything's been done. And then they're all doing changes and tweaks to try to get this back. And it can go all the way until December of, of, uh, next year. And it's, you know, it, it just really makes budgeting so difficult because normally you have your number there. We've already signed our contracts, everything for the year for teachers, busing, all that kind of stuff. So now if anything that happens, we're going to be reactive instead of proactive, which is, you know, really not.
Not like us.
Yeah.
We've obviously looked at three thirty five, one twenty nine, three oh nine. There are not huge impacts on the district. There are some. But really there's not because we don't have, uh, emergency levies or different types. Some of that's levies that can be on the ballot, some of it's caps on inflation, which would, you know, in the future, cap inflation where, you know, we've talked about thirty five, forty percent reevaluation. And it needs to cap at that as far as monies to districts and that. Those things will have impacts, but that's future, which it should. So, yeah.
Yeah. And that's a big impact on the districts that do those five year emergency levies. They go and they come back and they go and they come back to run it. Well, now they're not going to give them the growth on it. I mean, it's, it's really going to have a major, major impact on a lot of those schools. So.
Five year forecast with that said.
Yeah. So I, I think I just really want to point out is I really have not changed this because I'm waiting for something solid to come down from the Columbus. You know, we have our numbers here. We know that we came down a little bit this year on our restricted grants today. Same thing here. I mean, unrestricted and restricted. Then on our forecast, we're showing those numbers down. That's kind of right now how they got it, got us projected. You can see we're really getting into our cash. We still have about eight million dollars at the end of the day, which is a good thing because we have some districts and some needed, I mean, uh, in our county that went to a fiscal emergency. I mean, just because on this last election. So.
But looking at this in twenty thirty two, are likely we'd be out of the general fund if it stayed the track that we're.
Correct. If we continue on. I mean, and you know, there's a lot, but if we know upfront, we're going to look at contracts where, I mean, you know, we got some people like the STRS, let's say thirty two years, where people hire, have some turnover there. I mean, it'll really be, we'll, we'll take a big.
There's going to be some shifts.
Correct. I don't know that this revenue and, but this is a done deal on this. But it's just still, you're going off of what was projected. It is.
Yeah. So we're, I mean, we're trying, I mean, really with this, trying to paint like worst case, I mean, you can sit here and see, I mean, thirty nine, thirty nine, thirty eight, thirty nine, thirty nine, thirty nine. I mean, that's our revenue, you know? I mean, so it's very, I mean, like to me, if that happens, I mean, it could happen. But I mean, that we are kind of looking at our worst case and you can see that we still have some.
I think you almost have to look at it that way because remember, local revenue, then you get less state, at least the way it's built right now. So you can't, you can't project. Like it is projected sort of like flat.
Dollar per dollar, I mean.
I wish I could figure out that funding.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I mean, yeah, it, it, local revenue, we get a dollar, state gets a dollar. I mean, that's.
I mean, regardless, they're going to rob you to repay Paul.
I think that's the big thing, you know, when you sit there looking at, I mean, like they're wanting to do property taxes. I mean, that impact on everything else, then it'll trickle back down. I mean, it's just really, it, it's just real difficult to, you know, to track it. Everyone's doing their best guess, I guess.
It's almost like they're trying to do like a reset, some, some sort of reset or just trying to.
Yeah. I think the thing that's so frustrating to me and, and Mr. Bailey and I, we actually went and heard some of the people talk, some of the people that's on the committee. And going through on their different options and that they can do to offset like the, the whole set rollback number. And they got all this money in the rainy day fund and it, I mean, one of the, one of the people there said it's pouring right now. And actually, I think.
What's it at right now? Six, six, five, six billion?
It's a million. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, to me, it's just, it's harder to have it. So, but anyway, I.
And schools are going to hammer it for heaven.
That is cash.
I mean, they've, and they were tasked quite a long time ago with looking at school funding and they just, you know, they haven't done anything.
Well, I think if you go back three years and just don't let forty percent, thirty, forty percent increases. You probably don't have this problem.
Yeah.
A lot of things don't allow that to happen.
Correct? Yeah.
But I can tell you, I mean, like I reached out, I mean, Mr. Melvin, who's the chief deputy of Clarenock County Auditor's Office. I mean, they were saying like, do not do this, face it in over three years, all these different, not just hit them with the forty percent increase that they got. And that's, I mean, it hit everybody when we're at the twenty mil floor, even, I mean, like anything, any increase times twenty, that increase. And I guess probably the most frustrating thing is like, you know, we really did try. Now they're being reactive on the whole thing. They're just hearing them talk is that they're just, legislators are throwing out a house bill and they really don't know the total reperc, you know, repercussion on that. So.
Without understanding school funding itself, they're.
Right. I mean.
It's not just.
Services and everything. Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot to be discussed and I think there, it'll continue for a while. This is, um, I think we've got our two year operating budget from the state. And what comes of property tax reform, we're just going to have to keep an eye on, which brings us to, so keeping an eye on it. Before, before financing the future, yes.
Any word on what, uh, the wines committee that he had?
Yeah, see, there is, his, his committee came out with several suggestions which were looped in though of few of those house bills. The suggestions, if you want them, I can.
So they are listening to.
I mean, they've looped them into a house bill to three thirty five or to one eighty six, the committee recommendations.
Yeah. The one thing they put in there too is that, you know, they, they were talking about like a percentage carryover. I mean, the one, their recommendation was a hundred percent, like you should have eight years worth on there, you know, as far as like in the bank.
Yeah. Close that three spots, which some of them.
Correct. So.
So financing the future.
Yeah. So really on, on, on that, you know, originally we went out, was worried about that we are going to have too much carryover. So they're going to whack us. So that was one of the reasons, like, you know, like trying to fund our project ourselves. Well, that was before all this started happening. So I'm sitting there thinking, oh my gosh, you know, I mean, you, you were taking basically two million dollars, moved it to PI to, to make those expenditures where next year we have our last COPS issue falling off, which it's kind of like a home equity line in, in simple terms. We get that paid off. The hope was then is that we have about three hundred thousand dollars to our general fund that would free up that, that we had on this ten year COPS, which at our audit finance committee meeting, we talked about reissuing a COPS issue. So we've already, we're already paying the three hundred thousand. So we're already paying the $300,000. That'll keep the $2 million in our account. So like on our spreadsheet, where all of a sudden we're down to $8 million, we can keep that balance up if we do another COPS issue on that. And the interest rate right now is about 4% on that. So, anyway.
So just looking at it, so far, we've spent the money out of general fund to purchase the building that was the green property. So we've done that side of it. We've got the remaining renovation budget. And I think the big thing that we've talked about and what I've heard from Todd all the way through this, and we've said it anytime we've talked about expanding this place, is it's hard for us to invest operating dollars in infrastructure. I think with all those unknowns that we're hearing and not knowing where this is going to fall, that's the reason why we've prepared. So what Todd's talking about there is really, I think, the board has two options. And we talked about, we met with audit finance. We got the audit finance committee together and ran through these options. We do have a debt issue falling off. The 2017 debt issue is going to be paid off December of '26, so next year at this time. We still have renovation costs. We could pay cash that we've set aside. I don't know that right now. Kind of as we talked through that, I don't know that that was Todd's recommendation or committee recommendation. But we can do kind of a stopgap there, which I think, you know, I think Todd, if you want to explain that.
Yeah. So like on the COPS issue, I mean, like, it used to be you go out there and you do your best guess. I don't know what your cost, your project's going to be. You write it up, and then you get those funds from a bond sale. You're never going to hit it accurately, you know what I mean? There's either going to be more or less. And so what this particular thing does now, I mean, what they have now, this COPS issue, is you do your project. Once it's done, you can go out and say, "All right, it was 2.165 million dollars," whatever that number is, and then that's what you issue your debt for, like, kind of like, you know, retroactively. And then, so what they, our bond council recommended is like, "Why don't you just take it to $3 million in total that you could go out there and get?" In case, I mean, just for change orders or any of that thing, just to keep it, you know, clean. And then, once you're finally done, then you'll settle it for the actual amount of that. But she did say like, "Two, we could go out there and say like, we needed to do a roof for $250,000. We could take those monies and roll that in as well." If, you know what I mean, if we wanted to fix the roof instead of using our PI fund, we could issue a little bit more on the COPS issue on that because it's tied into your building. And that's the asset that's kind of given what you're on there. So.
And this is the same thing we did when we did like the HVAC, energy saving whole system.
Correct.
It's the same thing.
It's exactly the same thing. The thing that, what I'm saying there is like, when we went out and we did HVAC, the money we saved on utilities paid the debt. So now we have this one falling off next December, where we was going to have like $300,000, is basically going to just keep paying this right here. So.
So tonight is a reimbursement resolution for up to $3 million. It is not COPS issue. It's essentially saying, we go through, plan the projects out, look at our capital plan, look at our district capital infrastructure plan. And at the end of fiscal year '26 or fiscal year '27, we can be reimbursed for the projects that we do during that, including Patricia, the Mark Cook renovation, and anything potentially. And I think Todd, as he's looked at this and talked through it with audit finance and with bond council, we have a second debt issue that falls off eight years from now. So this would be an eight-year COPS that is at the same payment that we're already making on the one falling off in '17. So he's budgeted for it. So we're making that debt payment now. So it would not be an increased debt payment as to what we're making currently. Does that make sense?
It's falling off when?
December '26.
'26, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So we're making that now. So really, it's just kind of reinvesting that debt payment for another eight years. And then both of those debt issues would fall off eight years from now.
So that'd really free up some money for the general fund. Which I mean, if you guys would like, I could bring the amortization schedules. It shows like how it's, you know, it's getting paid down. If you'd like just to see where we're at on that. So.
Are we paying interest on the loans going back? We pay it?
They're at about 4%.
Like, paying that back versus just doing the $3 million, how much are we paying back versus just taking the $3 million? Is it?
4% on that.
Yeah.
And the interest, you mean?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Some interest, yeah. I think you're probably gaining that with dollars in the bank, on the interest rate you're getting on the investment. I really do feel like as we look at that five-year forecast, you know, I think the big piece is the comfort of knowing what your monthly, it's almost like knowing what your monthly is versus dispersing all the cash.
Would we save more by spending the three right up front or would it be better to pay?
Well, the thing is, we can keep it in the bank. Once we sell them and we get the proceeds, I mean, we'll keep it in the bank. Now, right now, we have most of our money at Star Ohio. It's about four and a quarter. Now, Star Ohio is a very short, I think a 90-day maturity. So the interest rate, you know, we just had an interest rate drop. I mean, it could start to go down. But right now, I mean, it's a great question because like, really, on there, do you spend additional money and go ahead and do it and not invest it? Or, so I know what you're saying there.
At our audit finance, Dennis did that math, and it was roughly, it ended roughly the same because of what the money that's in the bank and what we're making off of that in the long run makes about the same that we would end up paying.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. It's a great question.
Yeah. Because we had that same question in the audit finance. And then the other thing about that, because of the five-year forecast, it gives us the safety net of like having actual money in our bank if there's a need and figuring that out on the state side.
Star Ohio is four and a quarter, COPS is four.
Four, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's how close those are, like what's coming in and what's going out.
Are trending down.
And we can refinance, yeah.
And we can refinance happily through it.
Yeah. I mean, we might get out there and the bond market drop a little bit more, and we're 3.75 or something like that. I mean, the Star Ohio would drop some.
And the other thing that we asked that might be helpful, actually, I had this in my audit report, so I'll just say now, audit finance report, is that ultimately, say, schools are funded differently. And by next December, we know the reality, you can pay it off early.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So like, if we have it there, ultimately, we can pay it off in four days if we wanted to. Yeah. And no penalty. Yep.
Those are all great questions. I mean, like, you know, and we did run through those. I just think the biggest thing at the end of the day is that if the state does do a lot of cuts, I mean, this will keep us another $2 million to help, you know what I mean, on down the road, that we can kind of weather the storm type thing. So.
So those two items that we talked about, bid and reimbursement resolution, will be on tonight's financial section.
Financials, yep.
I think that was it.
Any further questions? Great discussion. Thanks, guys. Moving on to new business D, financials, which we have those three important resolutions in, financials one through nine. Do we have a motion?
She moved.
I'll second.
Bill made the motion. Lisa, second. Any further discussion regarding the financials?
Can you just touch on seven? That's what we just talked about, or no?
Well, seven's the resolution declaring transportation impractical. Eight is the reimbursement resolution.
Right.
And then nine is the advertisement to bid for Patricia, to go out to bid for them.
And what's seven?
What's seven is resolution declaring transportation impractical. When we have a student out, that's student out, transportation, yep.
Cool.
Any other discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pat Brocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare.
Yes.
This is Greg.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Moving on to new business E, personnel, one through seven. Do we have a motion? Seven.
I'll second.
Lisa made the motion. Melissa's second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to let you know that we, the student teacher we're approving will start in December, and they're a special education certified. I keep trying to get because they're so hard to find to hire. So, and then also, the stipend for Kelly Pearson, that's Title I neglected money, and we have more money come into our fund. So that's why she's getting more hours at Midwestern. We brought her, I think in September for a different amount, but additional funding. So I thought maybe I should clarify that with you guys.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
This is Pat Brocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare.
Yes.
This is Greg.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is Warky.
Yes.
Moving on to new business F, athletic personnel, three. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Bill made the motion. Melissa's second. Discussion?
The powerlifting coaches had a new position, or how's that?
We've had that on the last agenda, coaching with the powerlifting coach. Andrew was getting supervisor. Coach being coach wanted the younger guy to get more. So it was just a flip flop. We've had powerlifting. There were 45 kids there today.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've had that. That was actually added to our agreement during the supplemental review committees process back in June. So just a flip flop of who's getting the actual coaching stipend.
Was Shane now to Andrew?
So is the supervisor position needed as when you have a coach?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
There will, yeah, it's part of the upkeep of the weight room and outside, but part of the triangle piece.
It couldn't be one position.
I think the more bodies in that weight room with all that's going on, probably better.
If we didn't have as many students coming out, we wouldn't hire both. But because there's 45 students.
You got, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the, I actually keep track, nationally, form of injuries. You know, I mean, some kids jerk and stuff around and hurt themselves. So it's probably good to have more people in there to come along.
We have 45 students on that team.
What was that?
Could they, if they stick with it?
Can you imagine?
Well, then, we definitely need you to, because you'd need, you'd need more than one bus and stuff.
Yeah, certainly. Right.
Yes.
Hopefully, they all stick with it. I mean, I think they're growing that program.
Oh, it's huge.
Yes.
That's really great. Good. I like to see kids evolve.
They all, they're all playing football, right?
Some are girls.
Right. They do both.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you call the roll?
Mr. Rare?
Yes.
This is Greg.
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is Warky.
Yes.
Pat Brocky.
Yes.
Moving on, new business E miscellaneous. We have donations from PTO, Stanley's Driving Training. Do we have a motion to approve?
So, yeah. I'll make the motion.
Lisa made the motion, second.
I'll second.
There you go.
Melissa, any discussion?
Are we having a lot of interest in the Stanley? Are we giving them a lot of money out for this? We are, I think our grant dollars that we have from our drivers ad grant are drawn up. Oh, yeah, there are, but we are out of the dollars. So it's, I think it's, we'll just have to see what this next way of the grant dollars looks like.
It's good to hear, Ellen.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Mr. Shinko, can you please call the roll?
Yes. This is Greg.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
This is Warky.
Yes.
This is Pat Brocky.
Yes.
Mr. Rare.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to new business H, policies. We actually don't have any to vote on tonight, but we have 37 in our first reading.
Our policy committee meeting was thrilling.
Yes.
Sorry. There are 37 new policies, and all of it is basically from House bill, I O R B I S code changes, et cetera. And it's nothing, nothing big. Like, it's just a bunch of-
Little details.
Little details. Like, the first one on the slide, drug testing for motor van drivers. So we've always had to drug test our bus drivers. Now, anyone who's certified to drive the school van has to be drug tested when they go for their physical. So that's an Ohio law. We changed all of that to kind of go with that. Were there any on there that caught your attention that you want to ask questions about? Or it's really just, like I said, changes in law? And there's not really anything I felt like would be a lot of discussion.
Nothing jumped right out at me, but I wanted to thank you, whoever put the summary together.
Yeah, the summary was great. I was like, oh, my goodness.
OSBA, you, someone, you? Thank you.
It was a little T sheet because it was a lot.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a lot to read through every single one of those in detail and try to figure out the change. So a little summary is very nice.
Yeah, it was amazing. I mean, I clicked them open, and I was like, oh, my gosh. It is amazing. Yeah, just how, some of them were quite different. I mean, um, I don't know, different, but the wording's changed, the words changed a lot.
It's interesting because, because since they went through the whole update, like, I was like, these are all kind of fresh in my mind. Like, okay, well, now this one's changing, this one's changing. So, um, yeah, there's one.
One had a whole, whole new paragraph of stuff. And I was like, it said the same thing in my mind, you know, but it was just a lot of new words.
I mean, that's something that we had to just update our policies for. This is the first reading, so if there are questions, you can always bring them back next month or just feel free to email me, and we can kind of talk through it if you want. But it was all kind of required.
It's been good to have committee look at those principals directors.
Yeah.
Make sure that as those changes are made, we're making them in the right departments as well.
Right buildings, right areas.
Yeah. Well, the cybersecurity one, it makes us establish a cybersecurity program. We've already implemented it because we kind of had to. So all of our staff's doing cybersecurity training virtually now. So we're already kind of making steps to make sure we're complying.
Any other discussion?
So I wasn't able to attend the policy committee meeting because I was out of town. So I attended the OSBA virtual policy update, and that was riveting. So I would like to recommend that between attending one led by Teresa and one led by OSBA, Teresa's are-
Summarizes it for you.
Yeah.
I watched that one too, and I was like, oh.
I know.
Ohio is what I'll say.
It was not- I mean, it was really good because they really did a great comparison of the two, like, the previous and why it's changed. So, you know, like, it's good to know that background and why the language is changing and why we have to update, but I'll choose Teresa's from now on.
And this is one example, like, why you belong to OSBA. I mean, this alone, why would you not do your own policies or have a different?
A whole new job. That would hire a job. Any other discussion? All right. Moving on, and we'll vote on all of those next month. And like Teresa said, if anybody has questions, reach out to her in advance. And then moving on to new business I, Board of Education reports. Melissa?
Okay. So I hope you loved the student achievement that we had today. Can't do much cuter than that. But so at the Student Achievement Fair next week, the GNN will be showing their great work at the, yeah, OSBA conference. So that will be great to see them. So they'll be our superstars there. And then at the middle school, had some great success. So the seventh grade football team was undefeated. And the eighth grade football team had a great year as well. GMS Middle School placed first in a competition and had some other great wins as well.[1745.04] The eighth grade trip was successful, unavoidable. And then, and they also have had their sources of strength training. So anything we do for mental health is great at the middle school especially. And then upcoming is a, the cafeteria open house on Thursday. So they can show off the new murals and just how upgraded and a better look of the middle school cafeteria. So that is on Thursday, November twentieth.
You guys should have gotten invites like this.
We did.
To go for the.
From twenty-six to seven.
Yeah, six to seven.
Six to seven.
All right, anything else, Melissa?
No.
All right, Bill?
We have our Great Oaks meeting this week. We had one last month, we had before last meeting, so already gave a report on that one, so nothing to be fair, but we did, I see, I saw an also Goshen post on their website about the, the junior ROTC. Once again, so I'm sure we'll talk about that Wednesday night, sometimes we do. What a great program that is, and now have a program they start up at Laurel Oaks in Chulito, so, so that'd be cool, because I think it'll be good competition between Laurel Oaks and Live Oaks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so next month we'll have more to speak on.
Got that meeting later this week?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Okay. Lisa?
So I would like to thank Todd and Brian for covering the property tax and the financial portion, because they explained it much better than I understood it. But also, as they mentioned with the, the property tax committee, based on the Houseville ninety-six, we're starting to see different committees and working groups being formed to address some of that stuff coming out of that budget bill. So, and one of them is the O D E W Student Transportation Work Group, which, reading through that, we are very fortunate that we have our own transportation department in our district. Because when you're looking at districts like Cincinnati Public and some of the other ones, like the huge cities where they're using.
Like city buses?
Like city buses, different transportation companies, and trying to figure all of that out with decreasing money coming from the state to pay for all of that. We're very, very lucky that we've got that contract nailed down, thank you, Todd, and all that. I mean, it's just, it's amazing that we're, that we're in such a good position with that, so. So there's that, and then a few of the other ones, bills that have been introduced lately that jumped out at me is Senate Bill two ninety that was introduced. It requires public and chartered non-public schools to install a master key box. There's also a safety grant that is supposed to be a school safety grant rolled into that to help schools purchase and install these. And inside those boxes, there should be master key, access card, and maps to the buildings. And, I mean, thinking about like our district, that, you know, like, we're small, the public, like firefighters and police and everything, they know our buildings. But when you're thinking about like the hu, the bigger districts and things like that, that don't have that intimate relationship, it's, this is something that's definitely needed outside of school hours and things like that, so. And then the other one that I thought was really interesting is Senate Bill two seventy-six, which it's entering Ohio into the Compact for, Compact for School Psychologists. And that is, it provides more access to mental health and psychological needs for students. Members of state, the, the state members, so Ohio's, the state of Ohio, by joining this compact, it provides reciprocal and equivalent license for psychologists from other states to come and help practice when there is a need in your district. And you don't have those staff, those, that staff on, on payroll.
So this is huge, like in nursing.
It's huge, yes.
Like counseling and psychologists, so you can.
Yeah.
Practice outside of your state lines.
Yes, yeah, so it's good that we have entered into this compact to, I mean, this is the bill for Ohio to enter into it, so it needs to be approved for us to fully participate as a state. But I was very pleased to see that based on the things that we're doing here regarding mental health.
Also allows them to use like online tools.
Correct, correct.
So like right now, like, for UC example, our counselors can only serve students who like live in state and reside in state. So you think we have students like in Northern Kentucky who drive to campus?
Yes.
So we just went contracted with a company that has compact state licensed therapists at counselors that can.
Yeah.
Serve our online student population that are all over.
Right, yeah.
I mean, this is really.
It is really great for kids. Yes, and just a little update with Mark Hook, they had their family night or carnival the other week, and that was, that was really good. And thank you to everybody who came out and made the PTO trunk retreat a success. It was cold, it was a little bit drizzly, but it was, it was great that we were still able to have it and have all those kids come through. It was, it was a lot of fun, so, yeah.
They started lining up early, too.
Oh, I bet they did.
They start like five fifteen.
Yes, 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 so.
Because a lot of kids on the football field wanted to come.
I know, and you know, a couple of years ago, they had a trunk retreat on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And it was still like an issue with practices and all that, so, I mean, it, it stinks that they weren't able to do that, but yeah.
We did some.
But I know, I know, I saw that, which was really great, I'm glad that the parents coordinated that for them, yeah, yeah.
Cory?
Oh, yeah, so I did, I talked to Bob and Lisa, just kind of what's going around the township. Not a lot going on, they said. Firehouse construction, obviously, the, the comb dump is getting, getting cleaned up, you know, for a cost, but hopefully they'll recoup some of that. But other than that, they just wanted to congratulate the Warrior sports teams and all their successes, and so that was, that was nice to be recognized there. And then we also did have three Pee-wee teams go to the Super Bowl, they had a seven U team, a ten U team, and eleven twelve-year-olds, and eleven twelve-year-olds ended up winning it. So they're fifty-nine and one in their Pee-wee career. That's pretty good, that's Hoover's team, so it's, that's good, but it was, Goshen wasn't represented in a C C Y F L tournament, so.
Good, good.
Where was, where was that game, the Super Bowl, where they held it?
Bethel, it was, we had the, we hosted the second round, yeah, yes, which I still will never understand why we have a Super Bowl on a grass field. I'll never understand it, but, you know, it wasn't too bad, it was a nice day on Saturday.
All right, so Audit Finance, I already shared, and we heard the summary pretty much that we were there. We were typically, we only host that maybe once a year unless we have to, but with everything going on. Todd asked if we would be willing, and it was a great meeting, very much needed. Public Relations Committee, we haven't had a meeting since last, and then Goshen Education Foundation, meeting's coming up on December first. So don't have much to report here, did want to say the two hundred fiftieth memorial that's on Goshen Grind was beautiful, if you haven't got out to see it. It's very incredible, and it's just nice that our community comes together, not only like as individuals, but like everybody was there, right? Our choir was there singing, which is really nice, and people from, you know, all over our community.
County commissioner.
Yeah, Claremont County, it was really nice. And then this weekend, it's made my eyes kind of open up, because when we went to, I went to the SBAC First Team Banquet, and on the way back, I saw one right there in Bethel.
Saw what, oh, what'd you say, I'm saying?
America, two fifth and mirror.
Like, there's multiple.
That's cool.
There's going to be eleven total, and I'm like, I don't think I would have noticed that.
Unless.
Unless I had just come from the Goshen one, so.
That was Bethel, it's.
Huge, right there on the corner.
I don't know how I missed it, Ben Franklin store must have been.
It's, it's really nice, too.
It is, Ben Franklin. I miss Ben Franklin, that was, that was the store right there, right on the corner, I definitely didn't see it, so.
Yeah. Any questions from each other's reports? Good? All right, moving on to new business J, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Bailey?
Yep, some informational, first two, holiday luncheon, December fifteenth at Weiss Baker, you guys are all invited to. Make sure to pay for copy of your email as well, so that's where we, administrative team, we lay back retirees and other folks to the luncheon and some district staff as well. Two thousand twenty-six high school graduation, market calendar's up on the set, and once we get these other two calendars set, we'll set it for the next two years, but May twentieth at seven o'clock at NKU. And then we have a business item that is, you know, not, it's, it's in my report, but we need a resolution of appointment to Great Oaks for the next three-year term. That resolution after tonight, I know that you guys, discussion wise, but we do need a motion second discussion on that for appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Bill to continue that role of Great Oaks Board Rep.
Get a second.
I second, because he does an outstanding job.
And goes to all the extra meetings.
Yes.
I also, I mean, part of the discussion, part of why I'm nominating you is I feel like our enrollment at Oaks has went up because of your investment to the Oaks and all that you do. I know that you're valued member of the board there as well, for sure, so, thank you.
I really, I enjoy it, my, paths of my career are a little different than a traditional one, you know? Started university and then decided to go into trades, you know, and, and just, you know, having these opportunities for these kids to find their, their path. I mean, and sometimes it's, I don't know, they just do amazing things, you know, we do amazing things here.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
For every kid, just like we saw today, every kid.
No one's, no one's got As and Bs right now at Live Oaks, so that's. That's zero. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it really is, it just, and somebody the other day, he went to Live Oaks for the first time since the remodeling of that, and they're just like, and this first time since they, they were in high school. Now, they didn't go to Live Oaks, but they visited there whenever, and it was just amazing that the entryway there, it's just, it's really cool, you know? The kids have such a sense of pride walking into that building, it's just, it's really, it's.
Same with Scarlet, Scarlet, that's right, Scarlet, it's a lot nicer.
Yeah, and Scarlet, we're getting ready to do a lot of work at Scarlet.
Yeah.
And expand the, the, a lot of money into healthcare programs there and stuff, and, yeah, so it's, we're going to discuss that tomorrow. Yeah, but it's, it's, it's pretty awesome, and just, they, they do a great job at the Oaks like we do here. And I spoke highly of Mr. Dubbs, what he does, amazing. And same with the Oaks, just, I mean, just, just the, you can always stand on top and see what opportunities are out there. You know, we're never resting, you know what I mean, we're like, I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Because this isn't the end game, that's the, I love how Mrs. Walker says that, like, yeah, this isn't it, I gotta go make a living and live.
Open up doors to all different opportunities.
Yes, so a great partner, and we do appreciate your service on that board. Can I get just to all those in favor of Bill, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, talking about some scheduling of upcoming meetings, I just kind of wanted to, we need a little bit of a change, but I, we've got our Monday. I put that on there because I didn't know if we were going to back, need to back up the December meeting for some of this construction. I do feel like the eighth is still good, but organizationally, and then our January meeting, with some, obviously some swearing in and some steps at the organizational that we'll do. I asked that we move that to Wednesday, January seventh, or Thursday, January eighth, to be outside of, you know, sometimes we piggyback organizational to regular, but I, I think we'll just do organizational the week before, so that we get everything done, and then carry into our regular meeting. So either of those two dates conflict with you guys, one better than the other for the seventh or the eighth to do organi, and that's probably a, really, usually twenty, twenty-five minute meeting, it's not horribly long, it's committees and all those pieces.
I prefer the seventh if others can do the sevens, but I can make it work.
I may be in DC that week, but I'll see if I can do something. So there'll be swearing in will be?
Swearing in will be the seventh of the, the organizational, yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm fine with either.
I can do either one.
I can do either one.
So we'll go with the seventh for now, from what I'm hearing.
January seventh.
And then our regular meeting will be?
Regular meeting will be the twelfth, yes.
Okay, so that's just.
So then the twelfth, yeah, be country this.
Okay, January twelfth is the second, so that's kind of like normal, the second Monday.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Six thirty, regular.
The organization will be at five thirty.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll publicize that as well, so, okay. All right, thank you guys for that, and then just want a quick update, and I, I know it's getting late here, but I had held my first Superintendent Leadership Council on Friday. Great group of six through twelve kids, it was a joy to do it, just to kind of let you guys know what I did with them, not going to go through, I had an hour and a half with them, and I will tell you, preparing for an hour and a half class, twenty-six kids, brought me back to a classroom, and it was fun. But we kind of did some lunch introductions, little icebreaker, human bingo, which they enjoyed, getting up, and around, meeting each other. We then kind of talked what the Superintendent Leadership Council is, we mapped our future, which I'll show you here in a second, and then I gave them the Q and A time to ask me anything, except for when, how do I call snow days, and can I call it? But it was, it was fun.
One today.
Yeah, right. I, I kind of explained to them, you know, that this group is really to advise me and administrators in the district on, could be things like strategic planning, student support, school climate, curriculum, two-way communication, school safety. But I took about five minutes, and this is probably the boringest time for them, but I think they understood it, to talk to them why we do what we do, from target areas to the portrait of a graduate, to building our legacy, so that they can understand when we make decisions, we always fall back to target areas or portrait of a graduate. That I make goals, you guys make goals, principals make goals, teachers make goals, and it's all around those key areas. So then I asked them, and this was probably my most nervous part, I said, I gave them sticky notes, said I, Channel Five News reporter sticks a microphone in your face, tell me the three things about Goshen that are positives, that you love about Goshen. Then flip side of that, after they did that, I gave them three more sticky notes, and I asked them to write down any issues, ideas, or topics they feel are important for the school district to consider moving forward. So just kind of giving them that open slate of, what are your issues, ideas, and topics? I then took about a five-minute break and let Mr. Schlegel compute it, and they then took a survey, they took their answers off the sticky notes, put it into a survey, and then we let our good friend AI kind of tabulate it. And I'm not going to go into details because I haven't done it with them yet, but really what it did was it broke our strengths in the five areas, and then it broke some of the ideas for future or needs improvement in some areas. And you can see the opportunities, activities were strengths, which there were, you had a bunch, you had twenty-six different three positives, right? So it kind of grouped them into opportunities, activities, academics and learning, staff and faculty, community and environment, and athletics and sports. So those were the positives that they gave. Now, when you drill down into those, and I don't have time to do that with you tonight, it reaffirmed a lot of things that we always talk about, from community to our staff, to the offerings we give kids. From there, it was ideas for getting better, that talked about physical space and logistics, scheduling and time, believe our bell changes being longer were one of the scheduling and time. Discipline and safety, academic and career offerings, recognition and environment, and administrative issues. So when you, when you, kind of what we're going to do with this next is, I'm going to meet with them at our next council meeting, and as I said to them, you're going to give me things that we want to build on, that are great, and then we're going to have some things that we want to work on. And are you comfortable, when I say work on these, that we're going to develop a student-led initiative to do this? This isn't me saying here's the solution, this is you guys looking at our target areas, our portrait of a graduate, the way we make up the district and the decisions we make, to then look at how we do this. They all said yes, they don't know what they're getting in. They all said yes, they don't know what they're getting into yet, but really, the next step is, we'll get together, problem solve on how we implement initiatives, to build on the positives, and bring the ideas to life. Can't be all the ideas, it's gonna be a collective group of, what do we wanna attack? Some of the things that they brought up are low-hanging fruit that I can meet with my administrative team, directors, talk about the low-hanging fruit, some things we can improve. So, it was really good, great student voice, great opportunity to meet with kids, and I think they enjoyed it. I do have some follow-up with them, um, through email. Coolest thing is, I emailed each of them and their families and made them respond to me that they wanted to be on the committee. Uh, I will say, I had one mom call me on the phone and said, you picked the right. I said, yes, I picked the right. Maybe it's just she was surprised, so, you know, it's a different mix of kids, and, um, really cool to get some different perspectives. So, my hope is this'll continue, it was the first meeting, um, hoping to do it quarterly throughout the year, so four times a year, and try to come up with something that culminates. So, questions on that? I think that was it.
Maybe, maybe someone come in and speak to us?
That's what I told them, I think we'll have to see where we get for this first year of it, and what are, you know, where we see the, you know, the initiatives and the positives and building on. Like, it's just taking a little bit of time to get them there, and what, how do we really impact change, um, and do it right? So, possibly, that would be the end result, it may be a request from the board, I don't know what that looks like, but if it gets to that point, um, my goal would be, yes, they are presenting to the board at some point, um, whether it be this year or start of next, I'm not sure. The goal is for them to be on it from sixth grade to twelfth grade.
That's good, yeah, like that's.
So, I have, you know, some familiar faces that have been through it. So, this was, I mean, it was, you know, sixth grade, it was three sixth graders, three seventh, three eighth, four ninth, four tenth, four eleventh, four twelfth, so.
And you got these, some teacher.
Teacher recommendations and principal recommendations.
You got some.
Criteria, yeah. It's been a good, it's been a good mix, yes.
Students, students, all kinds of stuff.
Video games to sports to reading to, you know, so it's, it's a mix, very good, so.
We need to maybe have them join us, not this year, but maybe next year for our board retreat, um, for some kind of an activity with them, that would be neat.
I'm still building, I'm still building, I don't know what this one looks like. It was, it was a good first one.
Building a plan, it's not flying.
Yep. All right, uh, last, or not, not last, I'm sorry, guys, this, my others keep going on here. We did do a startup survey, um, SHP's been working to tabulate it all, and Teresa's gonna go through a, a high-level overview that we are drilling down into right now as well, so, it's cool picture, but, here we have.
Yeah. We had four hundred and fifty parent responses, sixty-three percent completion rate. I think some of them started and didn't finish, but we'll take all the feedback. Six hundred and thirty-four, thirty-four total surveys, um, across the buildings. So, um, from that information, we're gleaning, like, what areas parents feel like we do a really good job in, and then some areas that we, um, need to improve on, and we've already kind of put into motion some of those ideas based on their feedback. The, the strengths they talked about was strong communication, ninety-one percent of parents agree the district keeps them informed about activities and back-to-school information, which is a pretty good number, an A, so, I was excited about that. Eighty-three percent of parents agreed the first few days of school were well-organized, um, eighty-one percent found open house valuable, and we'll touch on that in the improvement area. And then eighty-six percent said that these events helped their child feel more comfortable at school. Another highlight or positive was a smooth transition and readiness for the next grade level, the next building, ninety-one percent agree their children's transition to a new grade went well. Technology comfort, ninety-six percent of families reported feeling comfortable using online tools like Final Forums, Progress Book, and Class Dojo, so I think that's definitely a win also, um, because that's a lot sometimes as a parent, you know, if I'm learning this platform and that platform, but they felt pretty comfortable with our, um, technology usage. Instructional confidence was rated pretty high, too. Parents rated the district's efforts to build reading comprehension and writing skills four-point-two out of five, and, uh, critical thinking four-point-three out of five. And then attendance and student success, parents rated the district's efforts to promote good attendance and reduce truancy four-point-four out of five, indicating strong awareness. It's interesting, um, that a lot of, a lot of attendance things aren't really our choice, we have to follow state law and do what they ask us to do, so, uh, that, the fact that most of them were okay with that, uh, was kinda positive, I think, for us, too. Our areas of growth, um, the first one was event success, structure and accessibility. Parents appreciated school events, reported elementary open houses felt crowded and rushed, particularly for families with multiple students or those needing additional support. So, we are talking about, um, finding a way to stagger it a little bit, um, so that maybe kindergarten, third grade, the, the new to the building would have more time individually, like, middle school has sixth grade for an hour first, and then the other kids come in, so that sixth graders really get that individualized attention. So, we've been talking with Shalee Stevens and Ashley Andrews about what can we do to kind of make the elementary, um, feel more, not as rushed, and then also if parents have multiple students, how to kinda help them navigate. Another area of growth and improvement was transportation and traffic. There's a challenge with bus route consistency and pickup-drop-off congestion, especially at the start of the school year. Well, we know pickup and drop-off is always gonna be a problem while we're deadlocked in our current situation. Transportation, you know, we, we had, um, I think a couple of bus subs in the beginning of the year, but I feel like that's probably handled now, so we've moved on from there.
We also, Teresa, I've got to talk with her, we're looking at with Peterman, uh, Bus Zone, which is an app that.
Yes.
Allows a couple of things, parents can kinda track the bus to, um, but also a sign-in, sign-out on the bus type of thing, but gotta look at pricing and actually, is it possible? So, to go along with, uh, with some of that drivership and stuff, so, more to come on that.
More to come. Career awareness, sixty-five percent of parents were aware of age-appropriate career exploration. We feel like this needs to be, um, maybe better communicated at our early, early elementary grades. Mark Hook and Spalding, broke it down by building, those are the parents that didn't know a lot of career exploration was happening with their students, we gotta do a better job of promoting that at our elementaries. Digital safety and mental health education, lowest-rated item on the survey was online safety and social media impact on education. As we all know in here, we don't give the students those platforms, we don't give them Facebook or Instagram or Snapchat or any of that, but, um, sometimes that bleeds over into school, and so, uh, I think our parent education team that's doing some of those trainings in the evenings for parents will be touching on digital safety with parents as well. So, you know, we took all of this feedback, um, we're already working on ways to improve the areas they told us that maybe weren't so good. So, the overall takeaway is that, uh, the parent feedback showed a strong confidence in Goshen's organization, communication, instructional quality. Uh, we need to continue our attention to event structure, communication alignment, transportation, and parent engagement opportunities. But overall, I was, I was very pleased with, um, the feedback we received, and, well, like anything else, our report card, we find ways of improvement, we're gonna look at these areas and try to find ways to improve in those, too.
You know how there's a separate college and career readiness communication? Is there a way that just even the link to that could be embedded into the principal's communication, so?
The Where To Wednesday?
Yeah.
And to the Friday principal newsletter?
Yeah.
Probably.
I mean, ju-, I mean, it might help the, the early.
I think probably at the elementary, you're probably gonna have to do it at the teacher one.
Yeah.
And, because it's dojo, and it's, they don't, they do a monthly newsletter at the building level, so, have to look at where it, age-appropriate wise, where.
Meet the parents where they are, yeah.
Yeah.
Do the elementary, um, parents receive the Where To Wednesday weekly emails?
I believe that goes to all, yes, I don't know that they're, because some of that, you really.
I'm wondering, like, if it's, when they look at it, they think, this is for.
Not me yet.
This is, yeah, this is for the, the high school parents.
Yeah.
This is for the middle school, high school, and they don't look at it, so maybe that's, that might, I mean, there's a lot of really good information in there.
I know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But I know, I mean, like, if I had an elementary-age kid.
I wouldn't.
I probably would look at it and say, oh, I've got ten years.
Plenty of time for that.
I'm gonna just put this aside for now, you know, so just.
Okay.
Wondering if that might be some of the, where they're, um, saying that they're not aware of the, the opportunities, so.
Because I feel like it's out there, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we absolutely do because of the age awareness, yeah.
And I, and I think a lot of this, we've, we've digested it, our next step is to meet with all of our directors, principals, to go through it together, that's where, we just got it back and finalized it, so, lot to come from it, but I think there's pieces that, like anything else, we get feedback, if we can make changes, we will, if that makes sense for the masses, I think we are.
Open house feedback got rolled into our, our calendar committee meeting, because I knew that, that group could probably solve together as well, so we have some ideas and think how to make that better, too.
Oh, nice.
All right, I got two more, I promise. This one's quick, I, I don't wanna make it quick, because I do think, we've got, you know, Veterans Day tomorrow, we're off, I think there's a lot of great ceremonies in our buildings today, but just to draw a little attention to our staff that are also veterans, I'll send them something special tomorrow, but we've got Mr. Edwards here at the high school, Mr. Tappan, Mr. Meyer here at the high school, Mr. Tudor, Mr. Morris, Kevin Ruckowski, he is our new high school custodian, um, and he is an army vet as well, Beth Douglas at the middle school, and then Aaron Walker, uh, at the middle school. He was just currently advanced to Chief Logistics Specialist for Military Sea Left Command, uh, and he's in the guard, I'm sorry.
Maybe, yes.
Maybe, but then, that's hard, so, um, Chief Logistics. So, you know, those people serve our kids every day, have served our country, and I think you guys know we're a military community, and knowing those staff and thanking them, so, do thank them. And then lastly, just real quick, informational, Todd, Troy, and myself were invited to a meeting with the township, um, with, uh, trustees, and Bob Rose, um, their planning, road department, you name it, we're.
County engineer.
Set down, yeah, county engineers, uh, they had a meeting with ODOT just to talk about Goshen Township, and where we stood.
Nice.
From a project standpoint. We went through a lot that day, um, it was good just for us to hear, um, what I will say, current projects, they looked at, you know, where we're at as far as resurfacing projects, um, looking at the district map, where it fits into ODOT state routes, uh, they looked at current known permits and developments, and what impacts those would have, um, not to get in, because it's not our side of it, but looked at Eagles Nest, residential development off of Shore Forty-Eight, um, Patricia and Lakeshore, uh, residential development off of Cazadale, kinda where they are in that process from traffic studies to whatever, those developments. Uh, they looked at safety issues, basically, we started at, um, Deerfield, and Donna J, worked our way all the way up twenty-eight for safety concerns, they listened, obviously they've made, uh, some attempts with stoplights and spots, but, you know, I, I think they're also looking at Cedar Lake and the soccer complex that's there, uh, Cedar Lake Lane, they talked about addressed pedestrian accommodations, talked about Linton Road, um, and the totality that was out there, Shiloh, Edington Pleasant Plain, um, and they talked about other topics, that they asked us, where are, you know, is the school district, where are our concerns? Asked county where their concerns were, uh, it was a very healthy meeting.
County was there, too.
Uh, county was there, too. County engineer was there, yes. Long story short, when you deal with ODOT and state dollars, they've got a three-to-five year plan, and they've got certain dollars allotted, there are other, you know, grants, um, different things that they pointed the township towards, which, you know, one of them was us re-looking at safer routes to school, which is a grant for the district, we didn't have enough rooftops close to school, Troy has started to work on that, uh, currently.
Oh, yeah.
With Linton being there, so there, there may be some dollars for that type of infrastructure and working with the township on that. Talked about needing, they put a turn signal coming twenty-eight to turn on to Goshen Road, we had said that one to turn left out of Goshen Road would be healthy, they said they would definitely look at that. I, all in all, it was a, a very good conversation, knowing that there's only so much funding, and there's only so many ways the township can get funding, uh, which some of that is, you know, TIFs and different things that they'll have to do as they work with developments, but, um, you know, it was, I think, one, you know, I, I appreciate it, I know Todd did enjoy to sit down and just listen, give some input, I do appreciate our, you know, trustees, township administrators for advocating for some things out here, but in the end, there's, you know, the dollars come from somewhere. As we just talked about, you know, that's an unknown, so, we'll continue to work, I think, you know, things will happen, but just wanted to update you that we, you know, it was a good meeting, anything you missed there?
I think you hit the nail on the head, we're definitely behind the fence, fence bridge, the one on.
Really?
Just a little bit, but I, I have to admit, the thing that was really great is that they really did sound like they were gonna be somewhat proactive rather than reactive. I mean, they know that, I mean, what's going on at Eagles Nest, and going right down the street, they were very, very well informed with that, so.
I think the big thing was, like, Eagles Nest was, they need, if they're gonna do a repaving of twenty-eight, it should be looped in with that repaving, so you don't repave it, so tie those dollars together from a planning standpoint.
Are we doing that the week, coming back to school?
Yeah, that'd be great.
That was, that was fun.
We learned a lot about township.
Yeah, that's probably the bus route issue is.
That really is.
We could use more roundabouts on twenty-eight, that would slow people down.
Hey, now, wait a minute, let me just.
I'm just saying.
Roundabout, a roundabout on a state road. Get, learn this, yeah, a roundabout on a state road, it's about three to four million.
Is it really?
Because you gotta stop the state route. Regular roundabout, I think it was half of that.
No kidding.
Deerfield or something.
Yeah.
So, what they have to do on a state route as opposed to a county.
Butler County must have a lot of million dollars, because.
But if it saves one right on twenty-eight, I kid you not, on Shiloh right there, just within that five miles where we lived on twenty-eight, it was like eight-foot tower.
So, what they're talking about right now with those, there's a study going on in North Carolina, and I didn't, you guys can get into this, because I figured out a little bit, was four-way stops on these types of roads, they're finding, finding them very powerful in stopping those types of crashes.
Really?
Just stop signs, four-way stops.
All the way up twenty-eight? No.
Not all the way up.
I'm just kidding.
But they, those have to go through, there's a governor's, um, safe, they call it highway safety, there's a governor's top-ten list, if you're on the top-ten list, it is by data, there are dollars that are, that are put to that, so there is a process for that, to be on that list, I guess that's, who's a who's here, and how much you're in the air.
So, this, so, ODOT took the lead, talk about their projects, the county engineer that was there, they talk about any kind of, or is he?
That was more about.
ODOT had to say.
That, well, I think that was more about.
Like, Goshen Roads County Road.
Yeah. It was, I mean, it's. Those conversations got into funding OKI, different funding mechanisms that the township and county could collaborate on, to find the funding.
Okay.
If that makes sense, as you look at it, the traffic studies, if it warrants it, you then have to have the dollars to do it.
Right.
Uh, and where, it's not just a county road budget, because theirs is much smaller than even ODOT's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, but, yeah, there were, it was good, I think, you know, it opened the door of communication for the township and county as well.
Yeah, the county, I mean, they, they even said they put tons of their money in thirty-two, that whole thirty-two corridor going out east, you know, like, big, that's big, those overpasses.
No, but those weren't, those weren't all county, those were a lot of these grants, which.
Right, there was OKI, different stuff.
I just suggest keeping whoever designed the thirty-two, don't, don't, yeah, don't bring them in here. Thirty-two is such a disaster, hope.
Yeah.
That's all I had.
From a board member standpoint, I think that it's great that you guys were invited and given a seat at that table, so that, you know, you were able to voice some concerns and, um, help shed some light, maybe, on the township concerns and district concerns, so, thank you for, yeah, thanks for taking the time to participate in that.
And maybe you should bring this to your calendar and say, yeah, don't do these, we have stuff, by the way. Here's our calendar, work around us, yeah.
That's all I have.
Can I just congratulate the three guys for getting back on school board, and thank all five of you, I mean, a lot of stuff went on around the state, you know, levy-wise and board race-wise and stuff, and the fact that our community is sticking with you guys, I think speaks volumes, so, hats off. The fact that our community is sticking with you guys, I think speaks volumes, so hats off to all of you. I mean, I think, you know, just seeing what we did, the little things, they make a big difference. You know, we, we got money going for Twenty-Eight kids there, but a lot life-changing at the beginning, you know, our, our meeting here today, I'd clarify that. But I mean, those kiddos, you know, that we're putting money towards those programs, so hats off to all of you. I mean, I think it's great, so congrats.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved second.
Bill made the motion, Cory second. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Schinkel, can you please call the roll?
Mr. West?
Yes.
This is Murphy.
Yes.
This is Poprocky.
Yes.
The rare, yes, this is Greg.
Yes, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-seven P.M.